Yep.
All right, we're gonna start this meeting. We'll start with a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a liberty and justice for all.
All right. Approval of the agenda.
I move we approve the agenda.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes. Public comment on agenda items. Nobody has signed in. Would anybody like to speak on the agenda? That was a okay. You did one of those during a weird, random. Okay, moving on then. Board member comments. And I will start to my right.
Me. Um, well, first I would like to say, um, while we were on our adventure at the WASTA conference, what a pleasure it was to spend that time with Spencer again and with Morgan. Um, I had no idea who Morgan was. But she is a delight to know. So I had, of course you are Spencer, I just, both of you are. And, um, what I really liked about our conference, um, was they didn't just focus on social, emotional, in the schools and at home, but they broke it out. They broke it apart. So they, like, each parts of it, because social, emotional is, it's huge. It's everywhere. It's whatever, but there's so many parts to it. And, um, I'm really excited, um, what our district, uh, our superintendent is going to do to, um, work all those aspects into, um, not just our school, but how we're gonna be able to use it at home. Uh, because I'm, I'm a kid, I'm a kid. I'm, I'm a kid with a kid. And, uh, I, he's a tough kid. So, um, working that social, emotional into our home, um, I can totally relate with anybody that's, that has a tough time with that. So, I'm really excited about it.
Okay, um, and my experience at the conference was great. I'm gonna keep it really short in the, in the, just to keep the time short. But there were many good sessions that had really great opportunities to talk with other students and not only our own students, but the student perspective on what we do as policymakers on this board is really important to me. And I, um, the more of that that I can hear, the, the better off I think we will be when we make our decisions.
Conferences are always great learning experiences. There was one session that I thought was a little repetitious of things, but I've heard before, but that's because I've been around a long time. So, I really enjoyed the pre-session on law. Uh, and that was, uh, you know, very helpful. Touched on all matters, various matters of law that pertain to schools. And I attended a session that was kind of a worldview stretcher in that I went to a session on, sponsored by Topanish, and they talked about their gun policy. And this is the group that has a group of teachers that are trained, marked people, carefully selected, nobody knows who they are, allegedly. And they have colored Kevlar vests, so that if an incident happens, they can be identified from, you know, the shooter. And I was just, since this is a perspective of which I'm skeptical, it was interesting hearing, just listening, to what they had to say and the rationale that they gave for it. And I found that horizon stretching.
Excuse me. Uh, I was also, I was kind of actually a little bit embarrassed for myself, because I always go to these conferences seeking out, like, tax structures and financing and really the kind of eggs and issues of what we do, the real, the meat and potatoes, if you will. And, um, the two classes I got the most out of were the trauma-centered schools and one that was the social, emotional and the pre-conference. It was just, it's like, wow. So I'm gonna start taking more of those, because I finally get more of that, more, just more thought going with those sort of classes, so.
Thanks. I have a message for you folks out there. First is our study session. Thank you for most of you folks, I believe, who were in on that, what we had a really good discussion on. So thank you for that. But also a message for you from one of our former people. Couple of you, well, many of you won't know him, but, um, Matt Charlton, um, was there, from the Manson School District, and he used to be the Belfair Elementary Principal and then, of course, Assistant Superintendent and stuff. But mostly I want to do this because I want to embarrass myself about basketball. You're gonna love this one. He used to play basketball with me in the mornings when he was here. And he's, of course, eight feet tall, and I'm not very good, and he was a great basketball player. In any case, I always like to, um, remind him of this, because he doesn't remember it happening, but I sure do, because it sure got me laughing. In any case, playing basketball one time here, uh, in the morning. And Laura used to tell, has told me this time, because I told this story to her, that he used to describe me as a little flea all over the court and stuff like that. Anyway, and you would remember that, too. In any case, apparently I was being a flea, and he just saw me right in front of him. I don't think he had the ball, but he wanted to go somewhere, and I was in the way. And that's one of the things I'm good at, is getting in the way. And what he did was, literally, just coming up to me, picked me up, put me down, and went on. And he doesn't remember it. Of course, I just fell down laughing. Anyway, but he says hello to everyone he did know, and a couple of you in the back there do remember him. So there you go. He's thriving at Manson School District. Otherwise, the presentation that Manson School District put on, um, which Laura went to also, was a eye-opening wow. Boy, we could, we can do some of that stuff, too. Otherwise, that's enough.
Okay, hold on. I'd be going out of order if I went right to you. But Morgan is not present. So we're gonna skip the oath of office. And Spencer, do you have any comments to make?
Yeah. So, um, at the high school, we are planning a winter, well, actually Morgan's in charge of it, but we're doing a, uh, winter holiday spirit week, actually, week and a half, all the way, the last, uh, two weeks before break. And we're gonna have fun activities at lunch and before and after school for that week. So it's gonna be really fun. Also, um, we're currently doing a Humane Society coin drive, benefiting the Humane Society. And we just finished up a food drive. And I'm working on planning the next student roundtable, which will include middle school kids and James A. Taylor students.
Awesome.
Nice.
Fantastic. All right. Consent items for the consent agenda. Does anybody have any comments on the consent agenda?
I would like to point out that you have a, um, paper copy of an addition to the personnel report before you. We discovered that we, a staff member that we had, um, is out of endorsement. She does have a master's in this area. Oh, there it is, okay. And, um, so the board can approve for her a, a temporary teaching certificate until she completes the Westie exam, which is her final requirement. And we are asking that the board do that. She has completed a master's in special education, and she is doing a pretty strong, in fact, even powerful job in her position at the high school. So we'd like to keep her working for us while she completes that requirement.
Is everyone in agreement to putting, having that in the consent agenda?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. I would like to pull one item out, which is the policy sixty-two twenty, which was the bid or proposal requirements. So I'd like to pull that for discussion and a, a separate, um, action on that.
Okay.
So, as you explained to me from the conference, and, uh, which is something I didn't know from Robert's Rules of Order and stuff like that, um, you said that you got instructed by the WASTA parliamentarian that the consent agenda does not need to be voted on.
If there's no, um, no discourse on it. So if nobody has a, an objection to anything? So since I wanted to pull something out, I suggest we vote on it.
And our past practice has been, we have voted on it, and we have required people to vote. That was how we set up policy governance originally, that it would take three people to vote something to be taken off the, uh, the consent agenda. So I'd like to kind of open it up for a little bit of discussion as to what's appropriate for us, regardless of what Robert's Rule says.
I believe that if one school board member has an issue about an item on the consent agenda, I think it's appropriate that we pull it off and discuss it at that time. I don't think we have to vote to pull it off. That's my feeling.
You're in charge here, so I'm just sort of facilitating discussion.
I, I would agree with Laura on that one, just mainly because if one person has an issue with it, it's good to have that discussion. And mine's not a huge issue, I just want clarification.
Right. Then further to that is just the whole notion of voting or not voting. We could go by Robert's Rules or continue our previous practice, which, at the time we set it up, it was pretty important that we did vote, because we were dealing with, we needed to have the protection of three votes to make something happen so that one person didn't dominate or do something, you know, that they shouldn't kind of stuff, which we had a problem with back then. In any event, so I'm throwing that back to you.
I, I have, I think it's good to vote on the consent agenda, personally.
Okay.
I like the way we do it. I, I don't think it's hurting anyone. And if we changed it, it could, you know, it could leave somebody wanting more.
All right, then, I will make a motion. I move that we continue to vote for or against the, the entire consent agenda and that we permit one person to remove an item from the consent agenda at their discretion as long as they tell us about that, um, rather than waiting, rather than having a formal motion to do that. So that is my motion.
Any discussion on that?
So, yeah, how does that square with what you said before about times? The process we have now is developed out of experience, and I would tend to go with that.
Right. And I have, there's a part of me that wants to go with that, too. On the other hand, um, we have, since we got past that, we haven't had that as a problem. And I, well, I don't see that as taking one thing off the, the consent agenda. All that does is mean we, we're gonna deal with it separately. And the power of the board is still a three-vote thing.
Oh, okay, so we deal with it separately at that meeting?
No, he's talking about going, making sure that we just, for, for our practice, that we vote on a consent agenda, that we vote on the consent agenda to accept it. And that one board member, if they, if they want to pull an item, all it takes is one member saying, "I would like to pull an item."
And then we would necessarily have to deal with that item separately.
On an individual basis.
And if that person wants to throw it out, well, that takes a vote of all of us.
So would we discuss that, that meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Sure.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Perfect. Okay, so now I need a vote on the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Any discussion on the consent agenda?
With the exclusion of the one.
With the exclusion of mine.
Exclusion, right.
Thank you. Hear none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? All right. That was a long way to get there. All right, so policy sixty-two twenty, real quick, was on the, uh, the bid or proposal requirements?
Yes.
And on the over seventy-five thousand dollars, the board will follow formal competitive process? And number, and nowhere in there does it state, and I thought it was state law, that we had to take the low bid. Um, and it says, it says number three, like, ensuring the district takes steps to ensure that when possible, district will use small minority business, says women's business enterprise and labor surplus firms, which is great, but if they're high, if they're not the low bid... Someone could...
We don't, we still have to meet all the state requirements for, um, public entities that do bidding, so we are still required to take the low bid.
Okay.
But we, part of what that means is we need to make sure that we get bids from women and minorities.
Okay.
And we're raising the purchase from thirty-five to ten?
Right. Those, those dollars came from the new federal bid requirements. They raised them.
Okay.
And if I can add a, a quick comment, that's actually extremely important, because our grant, our federal grant funds that we, that we spend, if we up that threshold to ten thousand, which is the, what the fed, federal government's now saying we can use, when we have teachers or administrators that, let's say, want to purchase computers, and they're gonna purchase five thousand dollars' worth of computers, we're not required to go out there and get three quotes. We can just go with our Dell quote and purchase them from there. So it cuts down on a lot of behind-the-scenes work.
Yeah, my, my new thing is, I, I understand we have to follow this, but we're also writing a policy that doesn't necessarily explicitly state that.
We have other policies that do go into more detail regarding the competitive bid thresholds as well.
Okay.
And this particular policy does say it, the requirement of complying with state and federal laws.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
It's still there. I would move that we approve sixty-two twenty.
Do you get to make a motion?
I should, I found that out, too. Robert's Rules off thing also, yes.
Okay.
And any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Boom. All right. I think we're going into superintendent's report. Nope. Nope, I'm sorry.
We do have an item on the agenda. The National School Board Association Annual Conference for August 11th, we have to get approval.
Oh, yes.
And, um, Director Patty is, would like to attend the National School Board Conference in the exciting city of Philadelphia this year. So that's on, an item for your discussion and/or voting.
I think it's a good idea. Craig has had a great deal of political experience, hard-knit variety, and I think he's well-equipped to benefit and benefit us by this trip. So I support it.
Big reason why I asked to go is, there was talk about going last year, us sending someone last year, and just we never made a decision on doing that, so.
And this is great, because it's the first time someone will be gone. And I think maintaining that import, maintaining a double vision. One, understanding what's happening in Washington, what the policies are or likely to be, and then understanding the local situation gives us binocular vision, and I think that's good.
I think it's important that one of us go. I don't think it would ever be a case where more than one person could, should go and bring back that information to the rest of us. We all get the, um, propaganda from the NSBA, and we all are familiar with what they're doing. But a presence there, an actual face-to-face with people outside of our little nucleus here, I think is important. I would support that, too.
I think it's good that Craig has come forward for that. There's always a possibility we want, we might want to send someone to Washington DC and then forget about the return ticket. But this sounds good.
Wow. Yeah.
Any motion, yeah?
All right, I move that we approve the NSBA conference attendance request to spend funds and send Director Patty.
Any discussion? Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And I will abstain. Thank you. Board development, link a superintendent update.
Okay. Um, the first thing in my, uh, report that I'd like to just take a quick moment and bring your attention to the lovely seasonal decor in the, in the room. We have Diana Graham and her class at Belfair Elementary School to thank for providing those items for us. And I think they're really cute, and they make the room a lot more fun. So thank you, Mrs. Graham.
I particularly like the bats. That's really inspiring.
They're really cute. All right, so we'll, we'll just keep going. Uh, budget status update.
Okay, so, we have a few of the information to present tonight. So we're gonna start with financial statements for last year, which were done and submitted. Um, if we could pull up the year-end report. There we go. Okay. So, this is gonna give us a snapshot of where we're ending fiscal year seventeen, eighteen. The first slide, um, looks at our enrollment over a ten-year history. You can see we started, um, back in two thousand eight, nine at around twenty-one hundred or two thousand one hundred and thirty-one students. Um, and then ten years later, here in seventeen, eighteen, we were right at two thousand one hundred and ninety. That's what we averaged last school year. So we're definitely on the uphill climb, as you can see there, especially if you compare where we're at currently with enrollment to this, um, scale as well. We had budgeted at two thousand two hundred and twenty-nine for this year, and, um, we're averaging, uh, upwards of, uh, two thousand two hundred and sixty so far. So, it's definitely, um, increasing. If we can go to the next.
Prior to oh-eight, was enrollment ever higher than oh-eight? Do we know?
Um, you know, I can get that information. I didn't go back past that. I know that for a time period prior to going out for the bond and getting the new school buildings built, there was declining enrollment leading up to that period. Then when the bond passed and schools started getting built, that's when they started to suddenly increase.
My whole time here, the highest was the year I started, which was two thousand four. It's been declining ever since then until the change now.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay, so our two thousand seventeen, eighteen general fund overview. Our beginning fund balance September first was, um, just over two point five million. We had revenues of just under twenty-nine million last year. We had expenditures just over twenty-eight million. We also had the transfer out. That's the payments for the debt. So that left us with an ending fund balance of two point six two five million. We had estimated in the budget that our, um, ending fund balance was gonna be just over two point five million. So we were in excess of that about a hundred thousand dollars at year-end. Now that two point six two five million dollars does take into account, um, non-liquid assets, so inventory, non-spendable items. So it's not like we have two point six million physical dollars, but the ending fund balance for reporting purposes is two point six million. We have about two hundred thousand dollars, though, sitting out there of inventory. That would be taken from that balance. Okay, so here's a two-year comparison as far as the breakdown of revenues. Shows, shows where our revenues were coming from in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, broken down through all of our major sources. The biggest place where you're going to see that jump is under that state general apportionment, where we received the additional two point eight million dollars due to increased enrollment and under other funding, um, increases. We ended up getting just about two million dollars in the forest money that we ended up being able to keep. That was not taken back. That is accounted for there as well. Okay, so this breaks it down by expenditures by activity. So this gives you an idea of how we're spending our money. So regular instruction, so this is teaching in the classroom, accounts for about fifty percent of our overall expenditures at just over fourteen million. Our special education program as a whole is, accounts for about eleven percent. We're right over three million dollars as far as expenditures in that program. CTE is just under one point two million, or accounts for about four percent of our expenditures. Our other compensatory programs or other programs that are funded, um, through categorical funding, this could be like ELL, accounts for about six percent of our expenditures, or one point eight million.
And for those other categories, special education, et cetera, the staffing costs are built into that, correct?
Correct.
So that's different from the regular instruction?
Correct. Yep. What they like to do, especially right now with, um, the legislative information coming out, is they like to showcase what your special education costs really are for the school district, because there's talk of the special education side not being fully funded and more money needing to, um, be put into that category. So that's one of the things that we really want to highlight through this entire process is what are expenses associated with special education, and are we receiving enough money? Last year, we had two hundred and seventy thousand of our local dollars that went into helping supplement our special education program because we had not, it was underfunded by state and federal. So we had to use our local levy dollars to help support it.
Is that the case for this year, too?
This year's gonna be really hard to say, for a few reasons. One, we did receive an increase in SPED funding, but we won't really get to see how that plays out until after January, because we had a significant SPED, um, enrollment spike this year that we were not, we were not expecting. So when they shuffle all of our numbers and realign our funding in January, we'll have a better idea, um, as to whether or not we're going to be considered technically fully funded for SPED or whether or not we're gonna be pulling from local levy again. So I, I can give you guys a better update come February. So the other instructional programs, this is just, these are, this is very, very small, um, grant-funded programs that we receive. This would be things like, uh, um, ESHI, like, uh, sexual wellness health class. Those type of programs go into those other instructional programs that are separated out. Support and community service. This is both, um, the operation of stellar, which was split out up until this year. We're no longer splitting it out, because it's now considered one of our educational buildings. But for last year, it was stellar, and it was also the support cost for basically operating the district. It accounts for five million dollars, or eighteen percent of our overall operating cost. Food service came in at just over a million dollars, and transportation was right around one point seven five. So that's basically the breakout of how we spent our twenty-eight million dollars last year and where we were putting our funds. So this goes into a little bit more detail and breaks it down into, um, specific objects of expenditures. So we can see that certificated salaries made up about just over ten and a half million, or just under thirty-eight percent of our overall expenditures. Classified salaries accounts for just over eighteen percent. Benefits for both groups is right at twenty-three percent. And then we have our supplies and our materials. So this is anything from the purchase of pens to, um, some lighting fixtures. Are gonna be under the supplies and materials at just a seven and a half percent. Purchase services. We do have a higher expense amount in purchase services for last year due to the contracting out for our OT and PT and such, because we could not hire those certificated physicians, um, at the school district. The hopes always is to hire them, and then you'd see an increase in certificated and a decrease in purchase services if those physicians can be filled here. Travel, we were just under a hundred and fifteen thousand, so it accounts for less than one-half of one percent. And then capital outlay, so this would be, um, purchases or constructions of buildings in excess of five thousand dollars that are improving, uh, the building. We were at, um, it was super fractional, way less than one percent, under a hundred thousand. Capital projects fund. So our revenue for capital projects fund in seventeen, eighteen is coming from Breakview School District for their, basically their bond percentage. They've made their last payment. We're not receiving any more payments from Breakview. We also had state match. We do still have some state match left on some of the other buildings that were currently in the process of closing out. And then our state and federal forest dollars. We received quite a bit, um, of those forest dollars last year. So far, I've seen none this year. So I'm hoping that we'll see some more come in, but with the amount that we received last year when they cut down trees, that they don't pop up overnight.
Yeah.
So that, so we're gonna, we're likely gonna see quite a bit less there this, this coming year. Expenditures. Our biggest expenditure that last year was the stadium, um, working towards the completion of that project. And then getting the, the little odds and ends done with our other buildings to be able to complete those. So our beginning fund balance was at four point one million. Our revenues that came in from those three areas account for about one and a half million. Our expenditures were just over three million, left us with an ending fund balance of two point five, um, which is where, just where we were expecting to be by end of year.
Little question on the state forest fund. Our district is, I think, seventh in the state for amount of acreage that is generating income for the state forest fund. Does the state simply aggregate all of it together and then apportion it out? Or is it done on that basis of how big your district is?
It's done on the actual trees that are sold from within your district. So it's, um, it, it changes every year, you know, so if, some years we have a lot of logging on those state forest lands, then we will have a bigger check than years when maybe they're not doing any logging on the state forest lands.
Oh, there's logging going on now? There'll be logging right next door.
Okay, so debt service. Um, we're receiving our revenues from our local property taxes, timber exit taxes, and then that channel fund transfer that I use in order to pay back our non-voted debt. Our expenditures are always gonna be our principal and interest for voted and non-voted debt. Our beginning fund balance was right over, uh, one point eight million. We have three point seven, almost three point eight million dollars come in for revenue for the, from those three, um, activities, and we had expenditures of three point one million. So our ending fund balance actually increased fairly significantly to two point five million. This is gonna be hugely helpful with the decrease of levy dollars that we're going to be collecting and the fact that our debt service payments are increasing. So that gives us a little bit of cushion to be able to make our payments in December, which I'm getting ready to do. So transportation. We, this fund... So transportation, we, this fund, we get money through state depreciation. There's other ways that you can get revenue for this fund, such as a redirection of a general apportionment dollars. We didn't use any of that this last year. So we just had our depreciation dollars, which this year it was only 122,000. And then we had some buses scrapped and some other materials scrapped, which ended up bringing us up to 123 for revenues. Our beginning fund balance was 376, but then they purchased those three buses, which came off the books in September. So with our expenditures out, it dropped our ending fund balance to 152,000. We just bought a bus. We do have a new bus on fleet, which costs 140, so our fund balance is looking a little sad currently, but we're in the process of requesting a reimbursement for a portion of that through that grant that I applied for. ASB, so the revenue comes in from our clubs or athletic fees fundraisers. The expenditures are basically anything that you can associate with ASB, both cultural, athletic, recreational, or social. They started the year at 293,000. They received $436,000 worth of revenue and spent quite a bit less, so their fund balance actually is ending at 334,000.
Didn't you project it was going to be less than what our beginning fund balances?
For this year.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
This is still last year's report.
And so, and the way that the ASB fund is done, so the buildings actually make, so the students make their own budgets. So it's basically based on what the students feel like they're going to be doing for fundraising activities or bringing in through fees and offset regarding what they're, what they're expecting to be utilizing the funds for. So yeah, this year, they're stating that they're going to be dipping into that. We'll see if that actually ends up playing out. So that's where we ended the year for 17, 18. I do, if we can go back Denise to the agenda, and if you can click on the F196 and go to page two, I want to call you guys' attention to the certification page. So this is the page that Dana signs certifying the financial statements. It gives you a snapshot of all of our funds and where we're ending the year. So if you want some general overview for any of our funds, you can get that right here on this page. It lets you know if we did have an excess of revenue or if we had more expenditures than revenues in any of our funds. And then let you know where we're ending for each one of our funds and total dollar value associated with all of our funds combined.
The first slide that you had regarding local property taxes, I noticed that this year was less than last year. Not by much, but it was less. Why?
Less people paying their property taxes.
Okay.
So that's normally where we see that because we levy out at the same rate. Now what ends up happening with that, so that amount that wasn't collected that technically was billed out, I have to certify our levy by the 30th of this month. This next coming year, so I take that amount that was left over remaining and I add it into what we're certifying and certify for a higher amount so that they can collect that full amount. But we have that rollback that we're accounting for for next year, a three-quarters of a million, because that will end up offsetting it.
Okay.
So does that mean, if there's 10 deadbeat taxpayers here that later on, all the other 100 of us have to cover for?
The politically correct answer would certainly be yes. It gets redistributed.
Well, that's good to know.
Because we levy at that higher rate and it gets redistributed amongst the group.
Because what we get is a fixed amount regardless of where it comes from.
Correct.
To get that fixed amount, so it has to, okay, got it.
But our fixed amount is going down as a result of the McCleary situation.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Ashley has a sick child at home, so I'm going to let her kind of finish her financial report so she can head out.
It's a seven-year-old demanding I put him to bed. So, okay, so if you guys remember from last month, I didn't present too much information on September because we were still in the process of move shifting money from September to back to August for accruals for the financial statement process. So I'm going to do a brief synopsis for September and then show you October. Don't get scared when you look at September, okay? October looks a lot better. September's always a hard month. Okay, so we'll start with the dashboard. So, so this is, this is our first month of this fiscal year and so the numbers can seem a tad bit daunting. I particularly want to call your guys' attention to, if we look at the second page, our expenditure page, because I do have to report to you guys on our fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. If you're looking at that green semicircle at the top, that number, our goal is always to keep it at 8% or above. So what that's telling you right now is as of September 30th, we only had 5.65% of, basically a fund balance against our expenditures, okay? So we were under that 8% threshold. There's a multitude of reasons for this occurring. A lot of it is the school year starting up and you have all of those supply purchases, all of those equipment purchases that are done at the very beginning of the year to get people through the school year. So it's very common for us to see our expenditures a lot higher in September and then it tapers off throughout the rest of the year to balance out our fund balance. But that is what it was for September. It's much better now though in October, okay? So.
Wave that policy.
I know, I know, seriously. Okay, so if you go to the next tab, so our month-end balances, the nice thing about this one is there was a change with Forecast 5 with how they're presenting our scale for month-end balances. That little triangle, the green triangle on the far right-hand side, that's where it has us trending as far as our, our end-of-year budget goes, as far as what the fund balance should be. And then it shows, that blue line shows you where we're tracking. So you can see that that blue line is significantly over the prior two years. And this is because this is our year where we still got to collect more levy dollars before next year is where it's, we aren't going to be collecting that money. So it does show higher fund balances this year. That's all based upon projections, so that's if we were to spend exactly how we've spent in our previous years. So if we can go to the next slide, so this gives you basically a snapshot for the month of September for where we were spending and if we were over in any areas. For the month of September, federal grant funding, we're always going to see some issues there for the month of September because OSPI is just getting around to approving our grants. So I haven't claimed very much for the current year, so our trends are going to be off. So that's why you're seeing the red there. Our surplus and deficit, I wouldn't worry too much about that, seeing as how it is September, and we will see it balanced out. And then we have a high-level report on our last slide, which will show you all of our variances. So if you look down, first line under expenditures, so middle of the page basically, and it says salaries, certificated employees. You go over to the side and you see, oh, we're over 245,132. That's where as of right now, based upon the trends and based upon what we negotiated, it shows that we're going to be over budget for certificated salaries by just under 250,000. That's if we pay out at the exact same rate that we were paying out in September throughout the course of the year. So if any certificated employees receive additional pay for anything else, that number will increase. So that's basically where we're starting base. We will be 250,000 over budget for certificated salaries and then anything else we do will add to that deficit. So, and if you guys remember, we did the budget and we approved the budget prior to NMEA negotiation being completed. So we were just sort of taking somewhat educated guesses on where we were going to land. So to only be up 250,000 actually isn't that bad. And then the other areas that you're seeing that are in red right there, like the one that's per 391,000, again, that's due to not being able to hire in-house our certificated OT, PT that we were hoping to be able to hire and they end up, we end up contracting for those positions instead of having them up in that certificated area. So that's September. October looks a lot nicer. So if we can switch over to that. And then with October's, I gave you guys the printed version of our other funds. With the slew of paperwork that I was sending over to Denise, I missed sending for this one, so I gave you guys a paper version. So this will go over our other budgets. For the month of October, capital projects, it's ending just over 2.4 million. This is to finish out the stadium and then do work on the softball field. Debt service went up due to property tax questions. So we're at 3.3 million there. ASB, we're sitting at 385,000. And I apologize to you guys, there's only a paper form. We do not have the electronic version up there. And then transportation vehicles at 152,000 as of the end of October, but we just cut the payment on November 15th for that bus, so it dropped down to 12,000. Enrollment is on the second page. And so enrollment for the month of November, we went down four FTE approximately in November, but we're still trending significantly over budgeted, approximately 35 over budgeted.
In October.
No, this is November. I include in the current as well. So we have September, October, and November reported currently. So that's where we are with the enrollment. So now we can do our dashboard for October. So if we can go to the, our second page, so this is where we see that our projected year-end balance as a percent of expenditures is actually at 10.11% right now. So we're just over 2% over our 8% minimum threshold for our fund balance. Our fund balance currently is over 3 million, which is higher than it has been in quite a few years. Again, October was the month that we collected property taxes, which is what increased our fund balance for the month of October. This is going to help us with the additional cushion that was needed to pay the increased certificated salaries. And then if we go to our next page for our month-end balances or three-year trend, you'll see for the month of November, our blue line is above both of our prior years, which is what we would expect at this point to be trending upwards of the, of the prior two years. And then next year is when we will see that it will dip. So the next page, our financial summary, you can see that it has us at 3.128 million for a fund balance. And you can see that we're, a lot of the red that was in the prior months is now gone. So we have some transfers, these transfers where it says the negative 1,153, those are like our co-curricular transfers for transportation and such for ASB and that's immaterial. But normally that's out over the course of a few months. And then the next slide, so you'll start seeing more red again here. And again, even with, with where we were at for October, you're still seeing those negatives, but you can see that 245,000, we haven't added anything to it, meaning that our expenditures for October are trending exactly the same as where they were for September, which is good. So we're just going to keep an eye on that and make sure that it's not going to, going too high and if it is, that we figure out what's causing it. That's all I have for the month of October. Do you guys have any questions, comments, concerns about financial statements?
Thank you. Good job.
Well, it's back to me now, isn't it?
Yep, it's still me and now we have a little hint from all of our buildings, our school success plan, the high school staff. Hackett is going to stand in for Ann a little bit on the Taylor report because Ann is not able to be with us this evening.
Good evening, School Board Superintendent Rosenbaugh. We would like to thank you for the opportunity to share our school success plans this evening with you. We wanted to change it up a little this year and have all the schools in the district present on the same night. All schools in the district are still on the same page and focused on similar goals. This work continued at a two-day district admin retreat in August. And then we all had a one-day building leadership team retreat the following week in August. This evening you will hear a few highlights on this year's continued work from each school. And I will get us started from North Mason High School. Our number one goal is still to improve first instruction for all students. We were lucky enough to have an instructional coach at the high school now who's focusing on supporting all of our teachers and with an emphasis on teachers year one and two. We added a second ELL teacher to our teaching staff, which has been amazing. We added a new position. We have a new dean of students, Steve Hackett, in the main office, who's focusing on supporting our students and focusing on working with students that are credit deficient. We're trying to target them early on rather than later and see if we can get them through. So it's been a nice addition to our administrative crew. We also were lucky to add, to reinstate a career counselor at the high school this year. This is my ninth year as principal of the high school and this year we have more college talk in the high school than I've ever seen. Our new career counselor took a crew, he's been doing college visits weekly. A crew went to the UW today on Monday. Next Monday, they're going to St. Martin's and it's cool to get kids that have never thought about college going to see a college campus. I think it's pretty powerful.
What questions at the end or as you go?
End. North Mason High School has, is implementing AVID this year. AVID is advancement via individual determination. And that is our piece of our district's MTS, Multi-Tier System of Support, Social and Emotional Work. That's our piece at North Mason High School this year. AVID is a program for middle-of-the-road kids, first-generation college kids, kids that have never thought about going to college, never thought they could. We're going to get them there. Superintendent Rosenbaugh has, has experience with this program and she's been talking about it with me for a couple of years and we dove in. We took, Steve and I took eight staff to San Diego last summer, end of July, for intense AVID training and it was amazing. I took a good cross-section of the staff, counselor, social studies, math reps. And what it is, AVID is a college readiness system. There's a difference between being college-eligible. Every high school graduate is college-eligible. And college-ready. And we're going to get our kids college-ready. AVID teaches certain strategies that are good for all kids but necessary for some kids. We'll eventually be going building-wide with these strategies, but we, we're doing, we're going slow. Right now, a main piece of AVID is focus note-taking. What we're focusing on are Cornell note-taking. Colleges use it. So when our kids leave North Mason High School and if they choose to go to college, they're going to be ahead of the game. We also have, we handpicked 20 AVID students that are in an AVID elective class every day. So we have a teacher, Jeff Beavers, who has, his family has experience with AVID in the Bremerton School District. He's been pushing for this also. So he's our AVID elective teacher. So he has 20 kids that he meets with second period every day and they're working on these strategies in addition to doing tutorials in this AVID elective class that support their other classes that they're currently taking. And also we're working on bringing in community members to help run these tutorials. And when we're up and going completely, it's, it's pretty amazing. Our goal is to add, we started with sophomores this Our goal is to add, we started with sophomores this year, we have 20 sophomores. We're going to add another grade level next year. And then eventually, we'll have an AVID elective class for all four grades. I already mentioned this, but when we've gone to the AVID training, the piece that stands out to me is good for all but necessary for some. And we're really excited about it. And our AVID kids have been included on these college visits. They've been going to these college field trips also. So that's North Mason High School. I'll turn it over to Steve Hackett, who's just going to give a highlight on James Taylor this year. And Steve?
All right, thanks. Yeah, so obviously Ann can't be here, you guys know about that. You have her success plan there from James Taylor. One thing we wanted to note, though, and have it kind of brought to the attention, was the way they've changed taking classes down there. We thought it was really impactful and very, very cool, so we wanted to make sure it was heard today, is in the past, they've taken multiple classes at the same time. So multiple subjects, a student would take all of them at the same time. And then if they're struggling, or get bored, or whatever happens, they kind of change and go to another class. And they're finding that their success rate wasn't what they wanted. And so they changed it up this year, worked with some other schools, and figured out what's worked in other places. And they've taken it where students take one subject at a time. You spend four weeks, and we're going to knock out history, or math, or whatever it is, and we're going to really dive into it. And they found the success rate to go up dramatically with that, and that it's been really successful in the first month or so, two months of having it. And so they expect to see that to continue. So, I mean, that's great to hear that it's going well down there, and so we wanted to make sure that that point was brought. And you have the rest of her success plan there, but we think that's pretty cool for everybody, so.
At Hawkins, we're going to continue a lot of the work we've been doing. We're no longer a priority school, but we want to see greater growth in our students. We're not happy with where our students are right now. So this year, our goals were that our students will demonstrate a 20% growth in all academic areas by May of 2019, and that with consistent behavioral expectations, school-wide for all staff and students, to improve classroom environment and reduce ODRs and suspensions by 30%. To do that, we've kind of, some new things we have is we have a second counselor. Both counselors are working really hard at doing small-group conflict resolution so that the things that happen in middle school don't grow to, it becomes a suspensionable. But also teaching kids those managements that they need to self-regulate. In addition to that, we're, have a second ELL instructor to try and help our kids. Our tier-one kids are getting a lot of support, but our tier-two, or three and four kids weren't getting the support. They kind of were out in the classroom fending for themselves. So now there's that additional push-in support. She's a master teacher, working with teachers on how to serve our ELL population and helping get that growth up there. In addition to that, we're working at increasing our rigor, continuing with our workshop and constructive writing. We really have been focusing on writing at Hawkins, but making sure that the rigor is pushing our kids and making sure that they understand we have high expectations for them, and they're capable of reading those, reaching those high expectations. For our behavioral competencies, we're really working hard at taking what we've been doing and creating solid systems with data. When a kid does this, what then? So we're having a lot of that. The new assistant principal brings a lot of wealth of knowledge into that area, and so is really helping guide our teams into getting to that. We're working really hard. Our teacher learning walks are increasing. Teachers are doing more, longer, and enjoying that chance to see each other. We have nine new bodies in our building, so it gets a chance for them to really get to know and get wrapped around and get strong teaching support to help with their students in learning. In addition to this year, one of the two big highlights we have is we have a watchdog program up and running. We're averaging two adults per week coming in, helping, they're monitoring, they're stepping in class. Today, she was in the library doing some makeup testing with kids that were absent last week. So they're getting that opportunity. And then the other thing is our science program is super-strong. If you guys get a chance, I encourage you to come by. There's not a day you can't walk into a science classroom and see kids fully engaged, hands-on activities. We now have a technology students association, and they're getting revved up to do a robotics competition. Their first competition is a boat building out of cardboard. And if they can get across a body of wire without it sinking, they're eligible for a prize. So this will be interesting to see what we have. So I fully encourage you guys to come see, etc. Our science program is pretty awesome, just to walk in and see what's happening. So that's pretty much what's going on at Hawkins.
Okay. So, good evening. You all know me, I'm Dan King, the principal at Belfer Elementary. I'm not sure if you know, our assistant principal now is Stephanie Brush. So I'd like you to meet Stephanie, and together, we're going to share our plan. So as Mr. Collins mentioned, our plan was developed with our leadership teams together in August. You'll notice that the Belfer plan includes supports and action steps that are centered around whole child, whole school, and whole community. And further, our success plan focuses on academic behavior and socio-emotional competencies that make up the whole child. Within our framework, we have two overarching goals. The first is to implement strategies and supports to create a culture that promotes the social, emotional well-being of all members within the school community. The second goal is to create a strong partnership between the school and families, and to increase community presence within the school. The desired result of these two goals is to increase school attendance by 15% and decrease student office disciplinary referrals by 15% as well. Further, we aim to increase parent and community volunteer participation at school and at family engagement events by 15% also. You may have noticed that our plan does not include an explicit academic goal. However, it is our belief that by focusing on the socio-emotional well-being of our students, we will see an increase in academic achievement as measured by standardized tests. In fact, research supports that students who participate in an evidence-based socio-emotional learning program show an overall 11% gain in academic achievement.
So once again, I'm Stephanie Brush, I'm the assistant principal at Belfer Elementary. As you can see in our plan, we're doing many different things to support the whole child academically, behaviorally, and socially-emotionally. I'd like to highlight some of the key socio-emotional supports that we have implemented, that we feel have had the biggest impact, or will have the biggest impact, and greatest gains for our students. The first is that all of our teachers are teaching the Second Step program. Second Step is an evidence-based pre-K through grade-eight social-emotional, or SEL, curriculum. We've been using Second Step at Belfer Elementary for a few years now, but it was not taught school-wide at each grade level with fidelity. What's new this year is that every teacher in kindergarten through grade five is teaching the program weekly. They now have access to all the online resources, which include videos and songs for each lesson and professional development tools as well. In addition to Second Step's SEL program, we've added this year the Second Step Bully Prevention Toolkit for kindergarten through fifth grade. These units teach students what bullying is and how to respond to bullying in a positive way. Another way that we're addressing social-emotional learning is through our Peaceful Playgrounds program. The program includes over 100 games and activities that are played on colorful templates that have been painted out on our playground. Students are taught the rules of all the games, and they learn ways to solve conflicts peacefully. The positive effects of this recess program were immediately noticeable the first weeks of school, and we're looking forward to more good results from it. Last, I'd like to mention our Watch Dogs program. Watch Dogs stands for Dads of Great Students. It's a nationally-recognized program that focuses on bringing fathers and father figures into the school for a minimum of one day per year. Their role at the school is to provide an extra layer of safety and support at the school during lunch, during recess, and to help out in the classroom. We had over 200 dads and kids at our Watch Dogs pizza night last month, and we had over 60 dads sign up to be a watchdog. We're holding another watchdog event in this winter so that we can recruit even more dads to be involved in this program.
As you can see, we're doing many great things to support our students' socio-emotional well-being at our school. There's so much more within our school's success plan that we didn't have time to talk about. We hope you had the opportunity, or will take some time later, to look at all the things we have included in our success plan and to support students academically, behaviorally, and socially-emotionally. Before we close, however, I'd like to add that the programs that Stephanie has highlighted would all be considered tier-one interventions within a multi-tiered systems of support, or MTSS framework. The most important thing we are doing as a school and as a district to support students' socio-emotional well-being is that we have MTSS teams at the district and school levels using data and working to put viable and sustainable evidence-based practices in place, which will support the whole child at the tier-one level for all students, tier-two level for those students needing additional support, and tier-three level for those students needing intensive intervention. At Belfer Elementary, we have a dedicated MTSS team that meets monthly to focus on school-wide tier-one supports. And we have a tier-two and three team that meets every other week to look at ways to support those students needing extra support and intensive intervention. It is the work of these MTSS teams that will have the greatest impact within our schools over time. And I want to thank Beth Borke, and she's not here tonight, but I want to thank Beth Borke for her leadership with this effort.
So as Dan mentioned, we feel that focusing on the socio-emotional learning of our students will result in an increase in attendance, fewer disciplinary referrals, and a higher level of family engagement. We feel that our focus on SEL will also help students engage in the learning process better. The three programs that I talked about, the Second Step, the Peaceful Playgrounds, and Watch Dogs, each help create a school culture and climate that's safer and calmer for students. It's a lot easier for students to be excited about coming to school each day to do their best to learn when they know that they can be safe from physical and emotional harm, and when school is fun and engaging for them as well. Also, students will learn better when they have the right supports in place that they need to be successful. So we appreciate you giving us the opportunity to share with you some of the key components of our plan tonight, and we'll be happy to answer any questions when we come to that part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, and thank you to Dan and Stephanie. Since we're both elementary schools, I glean a lot of knowledge from them, and we try to coordinate our efforts because we have the same kids. So I won't try to double up on the stuff, but a lot of the things they touched on in the last paragraph, the MTSS, is very important and similar exactly what we're doing as well. So our instructional leadership team met in August as well, and I'm sorry, I didn't introduce Amber Nygaard, our assistant principal. Did I introduce myself?
No.
I'm Jason Swayze. Sorry, let's get right into it. So our instructional leadership team met this summer, and we came to, we created two goals collectively. One, we put a percentage to, and we felt like this percentage would allow us to make a significant dent in some of the achievement gaps that we're seeing with our data. So the first goal we came up with was 80% of our students will show academic growth towards ELA and math proficiency as measured by the SBAK, the ALPA-21, which is the SBAK for our ELL population. The MAP testing, it's a measurement of academic progress, as well as the MPG, which is the MAP for primary grades. So looking at all these assessments, we're looking to see growth in 80% of our kids, not that 20 are going to decline, but this is a smart, measurable, attainable goal that we feel we can achieve. We will measure success by an increase in state assessment scores and a decrease in major behavioral discipline forms as collected in our Swiss data system. That's the system we use that we track our major behavioral incidences throughout the school day. We feel like a decrease in that area will allow us to increase in our academics.
Another goal that we've set is that we're also, like Belfer Elementary, we're implementing strategies and supports that promote the socio-emotional well-being of our students using Second Step curriculum with fidelity and a focused effort on providing professional development and training and support for all of our staff that is using those curricula as well. We'll measure our success through our savers, our socio-emotional academic screener that we've just started beginning. It's a progress monitoring tool and using the EES parent survey data and looking at that data to see an increase in our perceptions and beliefs from our stakeholders. Like the other buildings, we've divided up into whole child, whole school, whole community. Our pillars are our whole district. Belfer Elementary has touched on a lot of the different parts. So in academic engagement, we've committed to making sure that we're consistent, student-focused, progress-monitored, and differentiated workshops and interventions when we're deciding what our academic engagement looks like, feels like, and exists in our classrooms. We want to improve and support the improvement and knowledge of core instruction using GLAD strategies, walk-to-read programs, extra effort and focus of inclusion, and support for our ELD kiddos, and one-on-one small groups as necessary. To address the behavioral competencies for the whole child, we're continuing with our PDIS work that has been in place for a few years, the elementary schools. Teaching and modeling, and continuing to teach and model appropriate behaviors that we're requesting and expecting, using check-ins, check-outs, documenting our behaviors. And when we have out-of-school suspensions, having a re-engagement procedure in those for our high-tier-three kiddos to make sure that they're coming and re-engaging back into the school environment successfully. Meeting the socio-emotional needs with the Second Step, teaching mindful strategies, not just to our students but our staff as well. Modeling those behaviors in front of the kids when we need to tune into being mindful. The play-based kindergarten learning has been exciting to watch and see the engagement and the excitement for the kids that while they think they're playing, we're seeing some really lifelong learning strategies that they're doing in that collaborative play. We really focus on, and I hope that when the admin team came last week to see our building, that they see our warm welcomes for all of our students. Our goal is that they are getting no less than four positive welcomes when they're coming into our building from leaving the bus to the front door by the time they get to their class, and then doing the same thing as they leave and having very optimistic, caring goodbyes as they're leaving our care and going home too. So those are some of our whole-child supports that we're focusing on.
And the whole school, we are fortunate to have an instructional coach in our building, Tina Ephrae, who has organized teacher learning walks. This allows teachers to not only get into their colleagues' classes and see what they're doing in the same grade level, but also some vertical teaming. What is the next grade up doing so that I can adjust my curriculum here so that my kids can be successful in the next grade? For our behavioral competencies for the whole school, we issue positive tickets for kids showing respect, making good decisions, and solving problems. And we celebrate them at school-wide assemblies or pod parties, and we invite families to come in and celebrate with us, trying to touch those kids who are doing the right thing every day. We tend to focus a lot of our energy on the kids who are making poor decisions, but we want to recognize those kids who are making all the right decisions. Also, we opened a positive shop where they can take their positive tickets and then spend them to buy trinkets that they're going to take home.
Did you bring any trinkets?
Huh?
Did you bring any trinkets?
No, I did not. They bought them all. Another thing we talk about through the teacher evaluation process to help with the socio-emotional aspect, but also academic engagement of the student, is empowering kids to be a part of their goal-setting and their monitoring their own growth. So whether that's in kindergarten, having a rainbow chart where kids can see where they're at and they need to count to 20. Where are you at now? Let's do a simple bar graph and talk about it, set that goal, and watch that goal increase so kids are involved in their education, even at that young age. Whole community, they've all said, the Watch Dog program, many modes of communication from paw prints that we send out twice a month. Facebook, I have a Facebook page, we do robocalls, remind 101, we have family nights, we just had our fall into learning night, classroom volunteers, and also just teaching these emotional regulations and being open and transparent about what we teach kids to families. When we call for disciplinary reasons, or what the case may be, we talk about these emotional regulation strategies. And then to sum it all up with what Dan had said, that when kids are able to regulate their emotions, and we give them strategies to use when they identify their current emotion, that will ultimately achieve their performance academically. So we thank you all for listening to our presentations. If you have any questions for us all as a group or individual school, we'll take questions now.
I do have a couple of questions. What is the Second Step with PD?
Okay, yeah.
Professional development, I understand. So what's the Second Step?
Second Step is a socio-emotional curriculum. And so it's teaching... And so it's teaching, one component is the bullying, it's the anti-bullying curriculum. It's teaching Kelso's Choices, different behavioral engagement strategies, problem-solving strategies, and emotional regulation. So those are taught intentionally in all of the classes, and we've scheduled a time weekly to ensure that all students are getting it on a weekly basis.
And the PD is our counselor, provides professional development to our staff on how to access that curriculum and then how to teach it, and is a support for our staff who teach that every Monday.
Okay. And how do you administer the EES parent survey?
So I know when I joined Sand Hill last year, the way we did it is as families come in to the buildings, we can give them paper copies or put them on a computer, and they can answer the survey. We blasted the link out, and so families could do it at home as well and go on and answer the surveys. That same survey is given to our students for their perception, where they can tell us how they're feeling and how they feel cared for and their experience through the day, as well as our staff.
Do you get a pretty good response from the parents? I mean, in terms of numbers?
Numbers?
I felt like we had a pretty positive response, not as much as we would like.
Okay.
But it was with the turnover that we had last year and making sure we got the survey information. And I felt like we had a pretty good response. We saw a very good view of what our families felt.
Okay. And Hawkins, the mustard, mayo, and ketchup?
So part of that is a strategy for differentiation. We've been teaching the staff, you know, what do kids have to do? That's the mustard must-do. And then the mayonnaise is when you're done with that, what do you do next? So the kids that are accelerated or they understand the concept, teachers are providing that activity that extends the learning. And then the ketchup is, you know, if you're falling behind, if you were absent, here's what you need to get back on page with the rest of your class, so that it gives the kids strategies. So if you walk into a classroom and see that, you see a teacher have those three categories so that kids can kind of self-direct where they need to go to get caught up to the final piece, as well as giving our advanced students more challenges to get working.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then at the high school in the Avid class, you're taking students to visit colleges. What about students that are not college-bound? What opportunities do they have to see technical colleges, for instance, or specialty schools?
I believe our career counselor is arranging those also.
Okay, but not necessarily for just the Avid?
Correct.
Okay, that would be wrong. And James Taylor, can you answer this? Do they also go and check out different schools?
They do. They've been on the tours lately, on the buses. You know, Mr. Mosby setting up bus tours and Taylor students are on there. Their counselor goes with them.
Oh, that's awesome. Okay, okay, good. Thank you. Yeah, very cool.
I have a question. Dan, was it you that mentioned Cornell note-taking?
That was with Avid, the Avid program.
What's Cornell note-taking?
It's a form of focused note-taking. It's a format where you have, a student writes down the essential question for the lesson, and as they take notes, they're working on answering that question and reviewing their notes. And there's definitely a format to it.
So it sounds like that while they're listening to something and taking notes, they're already rehearsing elements of it, and so they're owning what they're hearing and not just trying to get down verbatim.
Like when I was in school and I took notes, you just took notes and you're done with them.
Yeah, right.
And this, once we eventually go building-wide, all teachers will be able to say, you know, pull out your Cornell notes, and they'll be able to review from yesterday, and it's supposed to enhance their learning.
Are these available?
You can find them online. There's a template right here. I'll show it to you later.
Thank you, Laura. Yeah, it's well-known. Dan has talked about it to me for years, and we're excited. We're diving in.
Yeah, I just wanted, the other observation I had was talk about alignment. The complete concert of things I've heard this evening corresponds with all kinds of WASDA programs that I've had for the last three years. The social emotion thing began over here, sort of along periphery. Kids that had particular traumas, life experiences, this kind of thing, they needed to be attended to. And then it's burgeoning into other areas as well. And while I was listening to you folks, I was pleased, one, that every one of you seemed to have a really precise focus. That told me you were really serious about it, and that's good because this would only ordinarily be dismissed as touchy-feely. And I feel, without touching, that you are prepared to rebut that and that you are seriously focusing on doing some things. And if you listen to what you're saying, it has an academic component. I would just really love to see the staffs, you know, in a year or so to see how this is coming because this seems to be a major learning innovation that is one of the things that I think will change even further, what we understand as education.
Good.
Follow that.
I don't know how to. Joe, for Hawkins, your goal, students will demonstrate twenty percent growth in all academic areas by May next year. Is that every? I mean, is that all? Four hundred?
Science, all, five hundred and two.
Five hundred and, how many?
We have five hundred and two students.
Five hundred and two students. I mean, so the top end, bottom end, and all that stuff?
Yeah, that's when we did our needs assessment last year for our title. We realized that one of the areas we haven't pushed is our upper-end kits. They kind of come into Hawkins and it's kind of stagnated. So we're really working ways with the ketchup, mustard, it's getting those kids to extend and grow as fast as others. So they're also having that growth.
Awesome. I really appreciate, I mean, Jason, you hit it specifically, that all of you have the smart strategies, which, you know, they're attainable, realistic, all those things, and I appreciate that from my perspective. But then my big question to all of you is, we got in our study session, and you can't look down at the end there because you have to stay out of this. We've got this core value thing, or core beliefs of the district MTSS team. Do you guys buy into that?
One hundred percent.
So I guess I ask is, based off your career, is this the make or break for us? And I mean that by, I mean, is this where we need to go? Yes or no, answer?
I would say that it's what we're tasked with. If we don't believe those things and we don't promise and commit to those things, then we've kind of lost why we're here.
Exactly.
As we develop them and fine-tune them as a team, as a district, as a community, then we're gonna start to see a change in society as well as education because I think we need an uptick in that.
And the other piece of that is it addresses the equity, making sure that all of our students are getting everything they need instead of just a few.
So we talked about it, and I think we're all bought in. And so as you work with her, she works with us, and we'll get you guys hopefully what you need from us to make it happen.
I just wanted to ask one thing about that, and this is to leapfrog on something that Craig said. So do you think this creed helps teachers to understand they're to be educational professionals here? Do you think it aids professionalism? It's perfectly okay to say no to me, you know, but...
We are on, we're being recorded.
So... Well, we're, you know, we're really aiming to develop each individual staff member and student into a leader. Really, that's what our aim is. Everyone is a leader, and everyone has a role in supporting the whole community, the whole school and the whole child. So, yeah, it's really to help develop leaders who are professionals that are here for a purpose, and then as to help every child be successful. Laura, do you have anything?
I can leave.
Well said.
I don't have any questions but a comment or two or whatever. I think it was last year that I saw the focus from all of you start getting more into the whole child, the whole school, the whole community stuff. And I was really pleased about that, in particular the play and kindergarten focus and stuff like that. But at the WASDA conference that we just came back from, I attended one session in which scared the daylights out of me. Bullying, the amount of bullying, now, this is a suspect statistic, but the amount of bullying roughly nationwide, it wasn't a nationwide survey or whatever. It was a pretty large one, several hundred thousands of kids and stuff like that over twenty-two states or whatever, suddenly jumped thirty-eight percent from the last two years. Why is that suspect is because, well, bullying's become the buzzword lately. And maybe we're seeing, you know, there's a whole bunch of hypotheses out there that I can come up with several as to what to explain that statistic off. But regardless, the statistic is there, and what you're doing with the whole child stuff, I think is the right response to bullying. Whether it's a higher statistic, for whatever reason, it's the right response anyway. And focusing on every child is also the right response to that. So I'm really pleased to see that, that, that's just really my only comment. And that's all the schools, but especially the elementary. By the way, the elementary school bullying spikes the most suddenly. So, there you go.
Spencer, you want to grill them?
The only thing I want to bring up is I think it'd be kind of interesting to possibly at the end of the year, for us to bring them back and that they share at the end of the year, June or July, how they met on all these goals and what their plan is to possibly...
Spencer!
I like him.
I like him. He's good.
Yeah.
Spencer for president.
He's like, huh. Colin's like, huh, leadership, huh? All right, we're gonna...
Exactly.
Class change.
The comment, I thank you guys for coming in and giving us just a highlight because, of course, you couldn't tell us everything that's going on. I appreciate what you said, Amber. It was seamless. It was quick. And I know you guys are all on board when he held us up and just kind of put you on the spot. Do you wholeheartedly believe this? And sometimes you kind of want to go, God, do I? You know, like, hold on, I need to question myself, but Amber, you answered that perfectly. And I think that you guys were all in tune with that when she said that, so that was great. Thank you guys for coming and sharing.
And I just want to throw in, one of the takeaways from the conference, I remember hearing from a young man, maybe others of you did too, I can't remember the setting, from a small school that was constantly kept down because he was one of these students that could go a long way. And he, basically, the story was a story of obstacles overcome and how he had to work to get his ability recognized so he could move on because of various rules that were keeping, well, why don't you just, you'll get there in a couple of years. He didn't want to wait a couple of years. He wanted to learn as much as he could, go as far as he could right now. You tempt me to believe that you guys are an AWACS system, working for that person, and that when one shows up on your radar, you'll scramble. And that's why I think Spencer's idea is really superb. You're funding against evil persons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and because we had such a comprehensive presentation from schools and the teaching and learning reports, just one item, I do want to make the board aware, we will be doing some advertising, looking for some community and staff members and students to participate on a committee to look at developing some solutions to bring to the board for our, because we're growing so much and because the state has not made changes in the class size requirements and the funding implications for that, we are gonna have to take a look at what that means for our elementary schools as we come to next year. We're gonna have to consider different configuration or a different boundary line, but we're going to need to bring a recommendation to the board on how we will address that. So we will be looking for people to participate in that process. And then finally, the Feller update, we, as you know, have been talking to the Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding their interest in taking over the ownership and management of a portion of our Feller properties, specifically, most of the trails system, just not the classroom space and the exhibit space allowing us to maintain ownership of that part of the property so that we can continue to use it and use it in different ways for kids going forward into the future. I would like to get some input from the board on some potential, do you have any guidelines around setting up some potential dates for a community roundtable meeting to get community input on and hear from Fish and Wildlife what they're thinking so that we can then bring that information back to the board and you can make some determinations about?
Is there a timeline that either you have in mind or they have in mind?
No, we're thinking this winter, yeah.
Like January?
Sooner, better, yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to get out of the holidays.
Yeah.
All right. That's what I have on those things.
Cool. Capital projects, anything there?
Mark has meeting, has had a meeting. He has an additional meeting regarding completing plans for the stadium roof system next week after Thanksgiving. And then we'll have, we'll be able to move forward on that piece and finish that up.
Okay.
And then once we have the dollars on that, we'll get out there with how we're gonna do the softball field and get that piece completed as well.
Will we, we will have to move the old Boys and Girls Club off that property?
Actually, no, the way they're gonna set it up. However, as soon as the Boys and Girls Club moves into their new site, we have agreed to partner with Mason Fire and also potentially the Sheriff's Office for them to do a SWAT practice and then a burn-down practice, so. So we'll kind of be moving it, but they'll be dealing with all of that for us.
And any report on progress towards affirmative action goals?
Yeah, so we are in the process of redoing our affirmative action plan. We have looked at it every few years. We are not ready to bring it forward again, but we will in the next couple of months and ask you to look at that. Basically, our plan doesn't have a lot of major updates because there are a lot of things we're still working on. We do have, you know, although it's typical to have goals about having female representation in the classroom, we're good there. But we have goals around minority representation. So does our staff near the demographics of our community. So those are the kinds of goals that you'll see in continuing in our report as we bring it forward.
Cool. All right, community linkage planning, we do have, and we got to announce it at the end of the meeting as well, but the county joint board meeting on the sixth at the PUD building. So we'll be meeting together as, if we all go or even the majority of us go before our next meeting on the twentieth.
And that's the PUD down here?
Yeah, the PUD in Shelton.
On Johns Prairie.
Oh, in Shelton. Okay.
The big building. That's December sixth, and I don't know what's...
It said Thursday. It was, I think, it was moved from December fourth was the original planned date, but at least the legislators asked that it be moved to the sixth, so.
So maybe they'll show up.
At what time?
Look, six-thirty.
It's that way.
It's in Shelton. I won't be able to do that.
Okay. Actually, that address would be up here.
The Bell, I thought it was the Belfer address.
That would be this PUD building.
I thought they said it was, like, they said it was in Shelton.
We better check, but I'm pretty sure it's in Shelton.
Yeah, because that address is up here.
We'll correct that.
I don't think they have space in there.
I'm pretty sure with Twitter.
That, it's...
It will be, it said Shelton.
Is it the Shelton one? Okay.
Oh, okay. Keep pointing in the wrong direction.
Sorry. All right, upcoming board letters, you have December?
Yeah.
Who has November?
I do.
Oh.
And it'll be in tomorrow. I'm sorry. I'm late.
You know what?
This is pretty difficult, my school.
Denise isn't gonna be there tomorrow to receive it, so you probably have until Monday.
All right, see? Love when the plan comes together.
There we go.
What would you like?
Am I in the second tier or am I going straight to third? I'm feeling a lot of stares coming at me right now from educators, and I'm starting to...
You're gonna get a lot of emotional and social discomfort.
Thanks for pointing that out, Laura.
No problem.
So what would you like as, anyone have any themes for my December letter? If I were to make something up right now, it would just be a comment on the emphasis on soci- If I were to make something up right now, it would just be a comment on the emphasis on socio-emotional.
I think that would be outstanding.
Teaching and learning and how it's a tough response to a significant problem. So I think those, I would try to link those two things. Seriousness about education, taking a socio-emotional approach for the sake of academics. But we'll see.
Okay, let's go. I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Excellent.
All right, assurance of organizational performance policy, monitoring reports. Our first one is ER ten, academic standards and practices. And does anybody have any, well, first off, we need to, need a motion to find if the, find that the superintendent...
I move that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER ten, academic standards and practices.
Okay, and discussion?
It's a very complete monitoring report, I appreciate that. I know it takes a long time to gather all that information, but it was very complete and I, and...
With a bibliography.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I like it was complete and it was also intimidating, that's what I think is good.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Laura?
Well, I appreciate the way you made the motion.
Thank you, Laura.
You have anything?
No.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay, all those in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance with ER ten?
The way she said it. How did she say it again?
I said that we find the superintendent's performance to comply with ER ten, academic standards and practices.
That sure beats in compliance.
Compliant with.
There you go.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, thank you, Laura. I'm really getting grilled right now, I don't like it. E three, academic achievement. I'll accept a motion to find superintendent compliant?
I move that we find the superintendent compliant with the standards we have set out for academic achievement.
Discussion.
I believe that the superintendent has reasonably interpreted the provisions of E three and that the district is making reasonable and satisfactory progress toward achieving the desired results, given all of the work that they are doing to literally rewrite academic achievement to become student success with the three components of whole child, whole community, whole everything. So basically, we're going, I, I approved the monitoring report and I look forward to the progress that we will be making under the new model.
You have anything? Okay.
Nope.
All those in favor of finding the superintendent to have reasonably interpreted the provisions of E three and the district is making reasonable and satisfactory progress toward achieving the desired results? Signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? All right. Policy review, last month, we, we voted on ER thirteen and that's mantra report. Do we have any changes that we would like to see made to that policy? Anyone good? Okay. Moving right along. Indigent German, announcements or comments from the public? Okay? Comments from the board and superintendent? And I'll just start out, whoever wants, has something to say?
I was, I think I've said it before, but I was very gratified this evening to see such a convergence of the things that I've been hearing about at WASDA conferences, including this last one, and what's actually happening here. I felt I was in a position to understand what was said here, which was said very well, but I have a specific background against which to put it. And it's really interesting and it's a, maybe it's not subtle, but it seems to me a way of giving emotional, child-centered learning a good name by using it and testing it as a way of actually getting people in line to learn and to teach what the world calls substance. But I think it's clear that, that relationships they establish with their teacher and their peers on an academic subject is itself substance.
Brief comment is, I like this format of all the principals and assistant principals coming together at once instead of different times during different board meetings and stuff. Both for the, being able to do it all at once, but also it's really great to just to see them all together and to see this cabinet, so to speak, part of the cabinet.
The power, it was the power.
Yeah, it was.
It's awesome.
And to, you know, I, I could feel, they work well together. I could feel.
They're a very good team.
Yeah. That's touchy-feely, but I felt...
No, it's okay, a lot. It wasn't this meeting, it was studies, I'm really enjoying these study sessions that we're doing. And I thought the discussion that we had tonight was really good. I thought the work was really...
We need to start getting snacks set out, so like, because every two hours, you know, it's like something to replenish.
Oh, is that, is that a requirement?
It's great. Kidding.
Spencer, you have anything? All right. Self-assessment of the meeting, I guess I get to do it. And I'm going to rate our behavior on our general meeting behavior as satisfactory in all aspects. And our governance principles reviews, I think we, we followed our principles and our own policies. And I'm rating us overall satisfactory, unless anyone else has a problem with that.
You did that really well. Nice job.
Next meeting, our next regular meeting is December twentieth here at six thirty PM. And also, as I said, we're, we'll be meeting December sixth, or those of us who will be able to attend that meeting at the PUD building, specific one to be determined, so.
Is this our official, like, saying we're going to be there kind of thing?
No, no, just, I mean, that way it's, it's out that there's a potential of all five of us being there.
Okay, well, I won't be, so just...
Four of us being there.
Four.
And I may not...
It is not...
There's a potential of three of us.
Specifically to meet with the legislators to discuss our interests for the upcoming...
There's a potential multiple board members might be there, so.
Well done.
With that, return.
Thank you.
All right.